Like four try stop because it'll wipe after.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and start tonight's city council study session. We have one item on the agenda which is continued discussion regarding the Norman Regional Health System, Inspire Health Program. So, thank you very much for joining us tonight and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you for having us and we're excited to give you an update. We thought we would share with you the achievements of the time that we met last to where we are today and then go over some of the financial analysis information that's been requested and then be available for any questions that you have. So, if you're ready, I'm ready, let's get started. Okay, so since May of this year, this is just a continuing update. Since May of this year, we've had 110 Inspire Health meetings, sessions, community sessions, one-on-one, we had a one-on-one today and this just continues to grow in our initiative and our efforts to share Inspire Health across the community. Also, since our council meeting on the 24th, we've had 34 meetings, Inspire Health meetings specifically, since the 24th of September. We've had five community forums that we've hosted and then we've had other ward meetings that you see at the bottom there. We've met with the business owners around the Porter campus and those show the three as three separate meetings and probably four or five individuals who have ownership around the Porter campus itself. And multiple community members sharing Inspire Health with them, met with state legislators and helped to inform them and educate them about Inspire Health. And then again, all the ward meetings, we've been everywhere, thank you for having us to your meetings and giving us that opportunity to share the plan and receive that feedback. So, it's from our perspective that went exceedingly well and we appreciate the opportunity. We also wanted to mention the letters of intent that we've had in place. So, for, from Norman Regional to the city, we have, you should have that information, the letter of intent that outlines all of our, the core elements and recommendations from Inspire Health. It also talks about the potential purchase of some land the city owns on the Porter campus exactly, specifically. We've also received a letter of intent from Variety Care and their interest in being a part of the conversation and dialogue and the planning around the master planning for the Porter campus. So, that we do have and then the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse is working on theirs. They've agreed and want to submit their version of a letter of intent. So, we're waiting to receive that, it's in the works. And then wanted to give you some updates as well. Since our last meeting on the 24th, we've engaged with ADG, a local architect that you're familiar with, a firm that's worked with, on a number of the Norman Ford projects and all across our city and state. And so, tonight we'll share with you an initial rendering, if you will, just the very first pass of what the Porter Campus Health Village would look like. And we have also, since that time, engaged with a behavioral health consultant who is helping us, instead of casting a very broad net for potential partners, operators in the behavioral health recommendation, we want to find the right partner and we want to, we want to narrow that field and again, get the right partner that fits culturally with us. We've worked on a process to improve, if you recall that night, we had some feedback about being separated from the wheelchair, patients who get separated from their wheelchair, which is their legs. We've looked at that process and put into place a number of recommendations. The home run van is working to connect with those patients when that's appropriate and our IMSTAT service is also working with those patients. If they're at the hospital, how do we get them back to their chair? And we make that a priority and so that process is underway. And then, we also have a Blue Cross Blue Shields update, that was one of the questions in the past and so, we're happy to report that we have some, finally, some definitive information. So, Megan Carter will provide that update to us right now.
So, we had been in renegotiations with Blue Cross for almost three years for the existing networks in which Norman Regional participates. Part of that renegotiation was a contract for Blue Advantage, which is the plan that Blue Cross offers on the exchange, the federal exchange. So, we had to wrap up the renegotiations on the existing contracts in order to add the Blue Advantage. And last Friday, we finalized those renegotiations and the contracts will be effective November 1st. And we anticipate, Blue Cross has to do some additional loading within their system on the Blue Advantage side because we haven't participated in that, in the past. But, we anticipate that by the middle of November, it will show Norman as a participating health system in that network on their website, so.
So, we share that with you because there was a question, but it's definitely good news for us because as you heard, three-year renegotiation process for us, that's a long period of time, so we're excited.
Councilor Beerman. Is this exclusively for Blue Advantage or does this mean that the new changes for OU employees that might end up with Blue Cross Blue Shield plans next year would now be able to access Norman Regional services?
So, Norman has been in all of Blue Cross's networks with the exception of Blue Advantage.
Okay, that was the only one.
Uh huh.
Well, then that answers my question.
And Medicare, which we've been working with them on Medicare for 2021. So, that filing happens much earlier in the year, so we've already been in discussions with them for that.
Okay, great. Councilor Petrum.
So, for the open enrollment period, starting November 1st, if they decided they wanted to go Blue Advantage, they can, it's just not, not showing up on the website, but it would be added later, so even, yeah, retroactive, I guess.
Yes.
Okay. The East Side Free Standing Emergency Department, we discussed how we have identified a property. We've been working with the seller and reached agreement on terms, had to work through all the details about what that agreement looks like and finally have that determined. And we're confident, we haven't executed it completely, but we've signed the agreement, it's gone back to them for final signature and we're confident enough that it will, it will work out and that we would like to share that with you tonight where that location is. So, you recall from last time, the, this was our zone of interest and that corridor along Highway 9. And I don't know if you all are taking bets if you need to collect money now or not, but I was happy, or I am happy to share with you that our location is actually.
I knew it. That's exactly where I thought it was gonna go.
Right there.
Have you talked, Crosspoint Church is gonna wanna talk to you.
We're, yes, we, one of our trustees is a member at Crosspoint Church. Yes. So, we're excited that we have, that we can begin to talk about that site and begin to do diligence and begin the planning and then design and construction for this east side property.
Councilor Holman, are you just waving your arm around?
Yeah.
All right, Councilor Holman.
So, has there been any discussion then with the adjacent property owner?
We'd love to.
About future expansions?
I'm sure now he would love to talk to you.
Yeah, I'm sure that's gonna make that more.
That's, that property's one of the more frequent questions that I've gotten my entire time on councils, what's gonna happen with it, but it's wonderful, thank you.
How quickly can we open the batting cages, is that what you're talking about?
Maybe Norman Regional can just revitalize the theme park. That was actually my first job.
Well, that was my question and additional question. What is historically the effect of a hospital going in near property? Because I've gotten some questions about property prices or, what am I trying to say? My words?
Value.
Property value. Property value.
So, suggesting that they are going up or they would go down because of the?
Of course, the fear is that everything's gonna tank and the world's gonna implode if a hospital goes in next to them, but.
I think that would not be our experience.
Yeah, I have no, I have no clue, so I wasn't sure. Hospital goes in, does that change the values in the areas?
I would hope so, to the positive, because it, what it does is, it really demonstrates there is a growth, that there is a long-term commitment to those people in that part of the community. It's not, no longer is it barren, we'll work on the adjacent properties, maybe together, but yeah, I would, it would not be my experience, it goes down.
Seems logical that that would actually increase the value of that property next door as well, adding benefit and possibly some, some movement there, I guess.
Sure. I guess the market would tell the story, but I don't, I wouldn't anticipate a degradation in property values as a result.
What happened in Moore, I guess everything ended up because everything was blown away, right?
Okay. And then, we have, this is where ADG comes in. So, we have been planning for our future and talking about all of these elements, these core recommendations, Healthplex expansion, the ambulatory and the cancer center pavilion, the Free Standing Emergency Department and as well, the Behavioral Health Center. So, all of that, our target is bond issuance approval, we begin design and construction and we get those things knocked out 2023. So, again, we've engaged with ADG and we've been, we're excited to share with you a concept, a design, a conceptual design that they've pulled together. Now, I don't know if you wanna speak to this or if you'd like me to speak to this, how would you prefer that?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. You want me to show the image or you wanna?
No, it's fine.
Okay.
So, for those of you that I haven't met, I'm Jason Cotton, they can G, I'm our Director of Program Management Services and so, we're obviously helping Norman Ford and Richie reached out. So, some of what we've done over the last couple of weeks is really to kind of look at the campus and how it might be reimagined and so, a lot of what you see here is just what I would say is kind of a first blush, what we kind of call a test fit. And we're trying to, basically, we've kind of had a conversation with Norman Regional about the types of uses that they see on the property long-term. And so, we've kind of gone out and looked at, you know, other models, other locations, other facilities across the metro area and even larger, you know, across the region at what those footprints look like and what that program might look like on this site. And so, that's kind of what you're seeing here. I will tell you that it's very preliminary, it's really just to get a feel for, again, the scale of the site, the scale of the programs, how they might fit on the site and how they might interact with one another. So, a couple of things that you can probably take away from this, you know, we have suggested that there's possible, a potential to possibly reintroduce the street grid onto the site so that you can kind of see that in some of the imagery. We've also got kind of interior green space, you can see some of the, the other uses that are on the side, which I'm sure Richie and Norman Regional will speak to this evening, you guys will probably be familiar with some of these, you know, we're showing a footprint for a Variety Care facility, the urgent care facility that Richie's already spoken to and then behavioral health, we've also introduced kind of a little, a housing component kind of in the southeast corner of the side. And so, that all is kind of organized kind of around this central green space and then obviously you can see the service parking that's there to support each one of those facilities. So, Richie, I'm not sure if there was something else you wanted me to speak to in particular, but that, again, this is, I would just reiterate, this is very preliminary, we're still refining it, but we felt like, you know, bringing that in might kind of give the council and everybody kind of a sense of kind of a rapid process, so. Anything else I need?
I would say very preliminary, preliminary, we haven't even had a conversation about why, what, where and that sort of thing, so this really is fresh, but it is an excellent conversation starter and gives you an idea of the elements and their presence on the site. So, let's just start with that urgent care center, as we mentioned, that, that would be our, our commitment is that urgent care, primary care, specialty care, all of those support services that could be in this space. And we haven't talked about this, but my assumption is, when we get to the education center, that that's a reuse of existing space as it appears to be drawn. This is the Behavioral Health Center, it appears that maybe some of the existing campus is included here with some addition to that space, but again, we're not, we haven't gotten to that point, but behavioral health in this location, Variety Care, that 30,000 square foot structure that we've, you know, I shared that image with you before, potentially going in this space. And this is, I'm calling it the Senior Wellness Center, this would be a great fit for that type of service in this type of density and then the connectivity that you could see happening. So, this is, I believe, the existing education center on our campus today, the rest of the hospital would be sort of, you know, sitting in this space right through here. So, this is, and then the apartments, we're, we, we aren't going to build apartments, but somebody might, it may be of interest, it could be an extension of a mixed-use type thing, who knows, but it's at least the beginning of that conversation for, for us to start planning. Couple of retail spaces shown here and the orange on either end here. And then, this is actually Primrose, Brahms on the corner, Doctor, or Medical Plaza here and then Doctors Park down here, so those structures are existing today.
Councilor Wilson.
I am not super familiar with Variety Care, what, what are they different than, I mean, is it just, what are they?
It's a federally qualified health clinic and so, they, they provide important services to the underinsured or uninsured and they, they have a whole host of services they, that they do provide out of, as a federally qualified health clinic. They have two locations today, one is almost, you know, directly across the street here, right over here, wherever, whichever street is Heims, but it is located on Heims Street. They have another location on Alameda. And those two separate locations provide services, but they, they don't provide, neither one provides the full complement of services that they're capable of providing. So, today, their patients may attend, may go to one clinic or another and some services, they have to go to Oklahoma City to receive them. So, they want to bring those two locations together and have that, that 30,000 square foot building, one roof, full complement of services and no longer having to push patients to Oklahoma City.
Councilor Beerman. Would this be a consolidation, would either of their current Norman locations close?
For them, I, that's the intent, is that they would bring it all together and be more comprehensive in delivering that care.
Councilor Holm.
Can you elaborate on what services would be new in addition to what they're doing now?
Luke Parmichael mentioned that to me, there are probably three or four, but dental is the only one I remember, but there were multiple, they don't provide, out of a list of 12 maybe, what was it?
I think prenatal, some sort of prenatal services were additional.
That's not dependent on this location, that's just something we've been in discussion with them for several months.
So, we already partnered with them, when, if you think of Health for Friends, if you remember Health for Friends, this Variety Care came in and basically took over that operation and again, a federally qualified health clinic and we provide financial support for their operations and their services they provide and view them as an important partner for us and in our community.
Councilor Petrum.
Do they do the full spectrum of women's health or just neonatal?
They do the full spectrum, they don't deliver babies, but they do the full spectrum.
Prenatal up until 32 weeks or prior if it's a compromised pregnancy.
Councilor Stanley.
Ambulance station.
Yes, so this overlay is on top of the ambulance station that sits on our campus today, it's about here where behavioral health is.
Yeah, and my intent, or my understanding was that it would be retained under.
Right.
A scheme.
Right, so we're not, that's just, again, first blush, we haven't talked about their first blush.
Councilor Holman.
Well, I do, this is really a lot along the lines of what I was wanting to see as far as visually. And really, the urbanist in the, the grid pattern of the street there being restored is a pretty attractive piece to me, but really turns that entire area back into a neighborhood feel, centered around a park there, so.
Right.
I really like what I'm seeing here, I think there's a lot of positive things that could happen with that, so I appreciate you working with that.
And good or bad, there is no roundabout on that grid quite yet, but first blush.
The one thing I would like to see though is, again, the discussion with the sheriff about Sobrience Center and where that could potentially be located, you know, but this, yeah, this is really what I was envisioning when I was thinking about what could happen, so, yeah, thank you.
So, again, this is just a reminder of those four core recommendations and always, the Porter revitalization was a part of that and I've included it on the list so that we, you see that it is a commitment of ours and a priority. This is the point in which we, I'll turn it over to Ken Hopkins, our Chief Financial Officer. As you recall, Navigant is our national consultant who came in and worked with us and reviewed our information, looked at national trends, looked at market trends and made recommendations that ultimately were these four core recommendations that we've discussed previously, so Ken?
Thank you. So, as we went through the phases of developing a financial forecast, you start with assumptions and so what we did was start to imagine what the volumes that we experience are and how those might change with a project. We looked at our current reimbursement, how that might change over time in different payer categories, we looked at different components of our expense, tried to estimate what the, the volume influence on those expenses would be as well as the inflation influence might be on those and they would, that would vary in each category. We also tried to build in our assumptions about what the project itself would do to our, to our financial expectations over time. So, the, the impact of issuing debt would increase interest expense and then there would be impacts on our balance sheet as well. So, we tried to build all of those income statement and balance sheet effects into our, into our model. So, as we did that, we went through this iterative process where we really tried to bring the best thinking of everyone to the table. And so, within our group, of course, was Navigant, so we brought their expertise to bear and then we also brought to bear what we know about our, our organization. So, as we put all that together, what we came up with was the group's best thinking about a consist, a consensus best estimate of the future. And we refer to that consensus best estimate as our anticipated scenario. So, what I wanted to describe to you first is the, the anticipated scenario that, that was reflected. So, the top of this is showing you the operating revenue and the operating expense, so the blue bar, each pairing of bars is a year and the blue bar is our operating revenue that would be expected, the red bar is operating expense. So, I should highlight now on each of the graphs that I show you, the first three columns are years, 16, 17 and 18, those are all actual numbers. And then, at the time we did this, fiscal 19 wasn't complete, so 19 and forward are all part of the forecast. What you'll notice in each year is that the blue bar or the revenue is just a bit higher than the red bar, what that means, revenue is a little bit higher than expense and that, that little gap at the top, that's operating income. And so, we've noted that for you in numerical format along that schedule at the bottom, so the first line says operating income and then in percentage terms, what we would expect from our operating mark, income in a percentage term is expressed as the margin. So, what you'll notice there is that we would expect in years 20 through 22, even into 23 a little bit, we would expect to see some depression in our operating profitability during the construction period. We think it will go down to about the low 2% range. As we begin to finish the construction, then we're able to see the benefits of some growth from the new facilities as well as the savings that we believe are achievable from consolidating our footprint. As those things begin to come into our financial performance, we'll see the operating margin lift into that 3% to 4% range, mostly around 4% in the later years. So, in addition to operating profitability, what we wanted to understand is the impact on cash and debt levels. And so, as we began to think about cash, we know we finished fiscal 18 about 230 days cash on hand, fiscal 19, this was an estimate at the time, we weren't quite at 247, but we weren't far off of that. So, this is, this early part of this graph is a fair representation of our days' cash on hand and what we know is that if we issued debt, there would be more cash available for spending on the project. So, that's what you see is the spike at that, at that fiscal 20 point. As we begin to actually incur expenditures on that project, we will spend those debt proceeds plus additional cash that we have now and so, we will see a decline in our days' cash on hand, even lower than just where we are currently because we're using some of our cash in addition to the debt proceeds to finance the project. So, where we expect those, those cash levels to go down to is sort of the low 170, 175 days cash on hand range and then as the project is completed, spending slows to just what we're focusing on, on equipment, normal kind of routine capital expenditures each year, the cash levels would rise back up to about 200 days cash on hand, which is normal for our rating class. We also wanted to look at debt levels, we have kind of two metrics, two ratios that are reflected on this particular slide, the bars represent debt to capitalization or what some people say debt to cap and that's just a reflection of your overall capitalization, how much of it is, is really based on debt. So, you can see at the very beginning of this, a couple of years ago, we were at 42.5% debt to cap ratio and we've continued to decline since then, going down is a good thing on this particular ratio. So, we ended 19 right about 32%, which is actually a little bit favorable to our, our rating class. If we were to issue debt and the amounts that we've described, we would expect that debt ratio to go up to about 41.5% and that's the equivalent of about where we were a couple of years ago. If we were to extend further back, debt levels were much higher after, after Healthplex, for instance, we've worked hard over the last decade or so to improve that, we're at very appropriate debt levels now. If we issue this debt, we still think we'd be in a very appropriate range. For instance, the, the median for our rating category would be about 40.5%. We'd be slightly over that median temporarily and then it would come back down over a couple of years. The other ratio that's on here is the blue line as opposed to the bars, what that's representing is a debt service, debt service coverage, so it's another way of thinking about your debt. What it's representing is, it takes a ratio of sort of an adjusted income number and says, how many times does that income cover debt service? And we have been about five times coverage over the last couple of years, you can see that's the tall part of the blue line. If we issue debt, that will be challenged, of course, it will come down to about three times coverage. Three times coverage is the median. down to about three times coverage. Three times coverage is the median for that rating category. So, we expect to be at three times coverage during and subsequent to the, to the issuance of debt and the, the construction project that would ensue. So, in addition to the anticipated scenario, what we wanted to understand is, what if some of our estimates are wrong? So, we did a sensitivity analysis, and in a sensitivity analysis, what you're attempting to do is say, I've built this model, I have certain inputs that go into this model, and then the model itself tells me what the outputs would be. So, the outputs we care about are things like operating margin, days' cash on hand, debt service coverage, and debt to cap ratios. Those are important outputs to us to understand from our model. And the inputs that we want to test are, well, what if volume isn't what we think it would be? What if the cost savings isn't what we think it would be? So, we test, we change those inputs and see what impact or what sensitivity do our outputs have to those, those changes. And so, I want to start with actually number two. With patient volume, what we assumed is, we only get half of the growth that we expect. And so, if we got only half of the growth, volume would be challenged, more so than what we had put in our anticipated scenario. And so, as a result, the, the performance would be worse. Same thing with consolidation savings. We know what we believe we can save as a result of consolidation. If we didn't capture that savings, obviously, the performance would be worth, worse. What we observed in both of those scenarios is that while the results are not favorable, they're not favorable to our anticipated scenario, they're not catastrophic either. We believe we could overcome those challenges if they were to, to be borne out. We also looked at what we called a worst-case scenario. That's where both two and three happens. What if we have half the growth and no savings? In that scenario, it would be very challenged. It is not a good result, but it's also a low probability scenario. So, we wanted to understand, you know, that's the worst case. What's the likelihood of that case happening? It's not very likely, but it's definitely a case we would want to avoid. We also tested, well, do we really have to have any sort of capital partner? And the answer is, that would be best for our organization. If we were to front all of phase one and phase two, that's why you see that four-hundred-and-fifteen, four-hundred-and-fifteen million dollar number, because that's a ten-year estimate of capital, not just the phase one that we've described up to this point, then the numbers would not be where we would want them to be. We think it's best to involve third-party capital. The good news on that is that the, the ways in which we envision using third-party capital are fairly readily available in our industry. So, there's really not a major concern on our part that, that wouldn't be available. But it's also helped, what, helped us determine that that's the best path to follow. So, in all of these scenarios, what we really determined is that this, the results were intended to be conservative in the anticipated scenario. If they're really worse than we expect, it's survivable unless you get into a worst-case scenario situation, which we view as unlikely.
Councilor Scanlon?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to elaborate on, on point five. We've talked before about we need the bond issue now to get started, and I thought I heard in previous discussions that, that once we do that, yes, there's a phase two to this, a part, whatever we call it, but we're not going to come back for more bond underwriting for that. That's going to be done under whatever we realize from, from the benefits gained in consolidation and so on. You're saying, yes, but we can also go to outside sources to partner with us.
And actually, both of those things are true. So, we anticipate using some third-party capital even in phase one. What's envisioned in over a ten-year horizon, when we say phase two, that could envision something like a further expansion of the freestanding ED that we'd build in, in southeast Norman and other changes to other sites. If we were to do that, we anticipate there could be some need to go back in five years for more, more bond money.
I guess that's what I'm asking.
Yes, that is entirely possible. That was envisioned in this, this plan, and it's built into this, the anticipated scenario as well. Although, the numbers are much smaller. The, the bigger projects are all in phase one. What we would anticipate in phase two was, was much smaller than these numbers. I wanted to spend some time on this status quo scenario. One of the things we were really interested in, we, we kind of tested the model, tested some of the limits, but what we were really wanting to understand was, you know, doing a project entails taking on some, some level of risk. Is that, is that better or worse than doing nothing? So, we wanted to understand if we, if we essentially just tried to follow the status quo for a decade, then what would the numbers be? How does that compare to taking on the project itself? And so, I wanted to describe some of those figures as well. What we began to see with the anticipated scenario that I described early in this presentation, we know what our expected operating revenue would be. It was at four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand million in, in fiscal eighteen. That's, that was a real actual number. And then, it was forecast to rise to six-hundred-and-thirteen million in, at the end of this projection period, which would be six-hundred-and-thirteen million in fiscal twenty-eight. So, in the status quo scenario, here's how we approached that. We said, okay, well, what if we didn't issue bond money? What if we didn't spend money on any projects? But then, we also, the projects assume you, you take on certain negative things in order to get certain positive things, right? So, you take on some debt, you spend some cash, and in return, what you're expecting is the ability to be able to get some savings in consolidation, which we know are there, and you should expect to see some enhancement of your volume growth over time. What we wanted to understand is, if you take out the negatives and you take out the positives too, what does it look like? So, we took everything that was related to the project out of the model and said, what does it look like then? So, we didn't see an immediate spending of cash. We didn't see an, an increase in debt, but we also didn't see any benefit over time.
Another question?
Yes, sir.
Assuming that we don't go with this project in status quo, is that, does that imply there's going to be, some kind of maintenance to the Porter campus? We're going to maintain it, but we can't maintain it as is?
That's, that's a-
We have to do something. Is that built into this, or is that?
No.
Would be a further negative?
It would be a further negative compared to this. And, and I've got another point to make on that, on that sort of status quo scenario in a minute, but I want to kind of frame the numbers for you. So, in the status quo scenario, if we pull out the project-related pieces from that and just let all the other trends that represented our, our consensus best estimate thinking, if we just let those play out over, over the projection period, then what we would expect is operating revenue in that last year of six, five-hundred-and-sixty-three million. So, the delta there between doing the project on the top line and not doing the project on the bottom line is fifty million dollars in operating revenue. So, if revenue is fifty million dollars less, then you can imagine that expenses would be, have to be a lot less in order to maintain a similar margin to what, what we have now. And so, we actually looked at that as well. And so, the estimated operating margin that we would have in that kind of a scenario, you can see in the top line, the anticipated scenario, I already, already described to you that we would expect to see some compression in margin during the construction period. It would rise back up to that three to four percent range. In the bottom row, we don't see that immediate compression. Margins would be a bit stronger for a couple of years, but they are declining. And they're declining because there's pressure on revenue in, in the, is there another question?
If you're going to maintain some, some, you're implying also, I think, a decline in services available, because you have to make up that, that, that difference.
That, that's correct, and that leads me to the, the other point I wanted to make is, this is sort of playing out the math over, over ten years. I'm not trying to suggest, because it isn't true, that we would sit idly by and watch margins decline for ten years in a row. We wouldn't let it play out exactly this way. What we would attempt to do, though, if we weren't able to address the root issues of our inefficient system, is we would be forced to look at other tools each year. So, you'd be trying to find more and more cost reduction every year to make up those, those, those dollars, and ultimately, in this latest year, fifty million dollars of cost reduction if you were trying to maintain an even margin. And then, you would be further challenged by the fact that you're still in an inefficient system that's even ten years older than it currently is. So, your point is exactly right. It would be a bit of a worsening here, but we weren't trying to introduce new factors to our sensitivity study. We were trying to say, if we didn't do the project, what does the rest of the math look like? So, it was more of an intellectual exercise in that regard.
The reality or the implications of this, and it would be fewer services or some reduction somewhere.
As you're looking for more and more savings each year, that is a possibility. Does that make sense? So, that was sort of the study. We, we, we got our best thinking on what we thought the anticipated scenario would be. We measured sensitivity-wise, what if those assumptions aren't all true? And then, we said, well, even with that, what if we just simply didn't do the project? What do we think our future holds? And it became our belief that doing nothing was a riskier thing than, than trying to respond to the challenges that we know are in our industry right now. That was our conclusion. These conclusions were written by Navigant as part of their, their work, and what they determined was that we have good margins, strong cash position, and a healthy balance sheet, and therefore, the capacity to do a relatively large capital project. They also noted that we have to execute it carefully. There's execution risk associated with this, with this project, and we need to manage it carefully, which is why we've engaged the expertise we need in order to make sure that we manage that, that carefully. The other thing they note is that we need to maintain profitability during this time. We can absorb some reduction, some compression in that margin for a period in order to gain the stronger benefits later on, but we need to make sure we continue that level of profitability. And based on all of that, it's our belief and theirs that this project is something that's affordable, and not only affordable, but compared to doing nothing, it's preferred. So, as we look at doing nothing, what we would see in that scenario is a slow and steady decline that we would be less able to respond to without the right transformation plan that we believe Inspire Health represents. So, they may not decline quite as quickly as that mathematical exercise shows, because we would be each year trying to mitigate that kind of erosion. But the pressures are there nonetheless, and that's what we would expect to see over time. I think that's it for me.
Councilor Carter?
Just for the benefit of the public, so, when you're talking about profit, now, your profit, does it go to shareholders on Wall Street?
No, it doesn't. In fact, what our profit goes to is, we, we average about two and a half, two-point-eight percent operating margins each year. So, that, I showed you that little gap. It's about two and a half pennies out of every dollar that ends up being left over after we spend money caring for patients. And what you're doing with that two and a half percent is trying to replace capital. We, we do and must provide level at the standard of care, that's the phrase that's used legally, for, you know, our physicians wouldn't want to provide care that's less than the standard of care, because that opens them to risk, and it means we're not, we're not serving our community well. So, in order to allow them to practice the standard of care, we have to invest in the equipment and the supplies they need and the staff that they need to do that. So, that two and a half percent is really just funding the level of capital that you need each year from a routine perspective. And that's why, when you need to do something large, you're expending much bigger dollars, and you need a little bit of leverage to help overcome, overcome that, that challenge to your financials. And so, the two and a half percent, it stays within our community. We use it to invest in our talent and technology, and primarily, what we're trying to do is make sure that we replace capital at the level that is needed to honor the standard of care in the medical community.
When you say capital, like equipment that wears out?
Yes, sir.
Needs to be replaced?
Yes, sir.
New technology that's become available?
Yes.
Surgical robots, new beds, imaging equipment that's in our surgery, our laparoscopic towers, you know, it's not so much furniture, it's usually medical equipment. And you have local control on these decisions. You're not being told this by some out-of-state corporation.
That's correct.
Locally owned, and these decisions are made locally to not only benefit Norman Regional Health System, but to benefit Norman, Oklahoma, and the region we serve as a whole.
Yes, sir, and influenced by the trustees that are, that are appointed. So, we bring every major capital item to the trustees for their ultimate approval on those. And so, they're trying to make sure that we're responding to the needs in the community and the needs of our physicians.
Councilor Biermann?
So, my question is, you'd mentioned in here, it was a couple slides back, about affordability really being tied to not having a downturn of any kind? And so, I was wondering, what kind of downturn, if you go back two slides, I'm not relaying it nearly as well as you did. There we go, one more, one more forward. So, now, two forward.
This one?
One more.
This?
Affordability.
Okay.
If Norman Regional Health System experiences a downturn, what do you mean by downturn?
So, what they're implying by that is this sensitivity analysis that we tested, if we saw a downturn in volume, or if we didn't capture the savings. Or, also, as I mentioned, we need to maintain margins during that time. So, we have about two to two and a half percent margin that we're expecting during that construction period. If we didn't have that, then it, it makes all these numbers a bit worse. Depending on how bad it was and how long it lasted, it, it's not necessarily a threat to the project, but what they're saying is that we need to maintain those margins during the construction period.
You're talking more about internal processes and less about, like, an economic recession or drastic cuts to reimbursement rates because of cash crunch issues at the federal level?
So, those things are, are risks. Absolutely, that's correct. So, here's the way in which they're risked. If, if Medicare were to make a substantial change in their payment, then that, that flows down to us, reduces revenue. We'd have to further reduce expense in order to maintain margin. Medicare has been pretty steady in the very small increase range for a number of years. So, we're already used to dealing with those small increases. We only anticipated in our, our anticipated scenario for there to be small increases. So, we didn't count on any, any sort of improvement in what track record Medicare currently has. If they were to have a worse track record, you're right, that could be a, a challenge to these numbers, depending on how severe and how long that lasted. But we didn't anticipate any improvement there in the first place. In fact, what we're seeing with Meagan's announcement is that we could be a little bit better off than what we anticipated in some of our, some of our reimbursement.
Thank you. Councilor Wilson, did I see your hand go up?
No. It's just...
Looks like it.
Looking for sympathy.
At least it was, this part of my hand was broken.
Any other questions?
So, maybe I'll tell you that this information truly informed our decision to move forward with Inspire Health. It was our, our attempt, we did our own internal analysis. We had a third-party, objective third-party come in and look at it and really tweak it, work with us to understand the market, understand our current operations, understand where we're going, and they, they provided those guardrails. And this decision to move forward is about advancing the work that we do. It's not about retreating or staying the course. And that's what our trustees charged us all to do. They, they agree that if we stand still, we will be passed by, and you saw the numbers for status quo, and we'd be fine for a period of time. But in order for us to achieve the outcomes that we want, we need to implement this plan and begin to think about our effectiveness and our efficiencies and how we are sustainable for the next seventy-three-plus years.
Councilor Holman?
So, at the award meeting last week, you came to think in that packet, there was a actual dollar amount for Porter. It could be, can you talk about that a little bit?
Sure. There's a handout that we've, yes, right there, and I believe-
Question to you.
The two numbers, you take the two purple colors. Oh, on Porter, you're talking about Porter, not the, okay, so-
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, Porter, there is a, a ten-million-dollar placeholder, and that allows us to begin to work on that site plan that you saw, that master planning. That's the initial commitment to, whether it's site work that's required, if it's constructing that urgent care, whatever it is, and then we know where we can go next. Like I said, if, if there are apartments that truly show up on the Porter campus, we would not be building apartments, nor would we want to be doing that. But it's our, our initial commitment to that project, and then as we grow and go forward, then we would know. If you see behavioral health, I think it's at twenty. Does it say twenty million? So, behavioral health is on that campus, so now you're talking thirty million dollars literally on that site.
So, if we wanted to do the street grid restoration thing, who would be doing that, do you think?
Well, that-
Would that be part of that, or would some of the city comes up with it?
Yeah, it would depend on how, I, I don't know, it depends. So, in Moore, when we constructed our Moore project, there was a street that was extended that wasn't there before. It was previously, it had been closed off and covered over. We reestablished that street. I believe we worked with the county or on that project, or maybe the city, but that was just adding that street. So- So, we did a fair amount of that work as well on parts of that project that we controlled.
So, okay, so that's $10 million that Norman Hospital System is committing to the Porter campus?
That's our placeholder.
And the 20 million?
Correct.
Yep. 30 million total?
And, yeah.
Right. Take it together.
Richie, just a question on the map from folks at ADG about what could happen on that map that currently sits. There are pieces of property owned by the city of Norman. So I'm assuming at some point we clean that map up to allow that development to take place.
That would, yes, that's a part, that's the objective of the letter of intent, and as I mentioned, we would like to have those discussions, advance that cause, and disentangle, if you will, make it much more cleaner, and then begin on that master planning part of that campus. So absolutely. And so, last night at our board meeting, our trustees authorized me to begin those negotiations when appropriate, pending bond issuance approval. We clear that hurdle, we know we're ready to roll. And so, when we get that approved, then we're ready to start talking about that purchase and making it happen.
We'll start at 50.
Okay. 50 cents going to 75.
Mr. Smith, I've got a question about the NPS nurses program. My son will be getting, I think he got a flu shot last week, through the schools, I don't know if that was you, but I'd like to hear, it's just very convenient, and I appreciate it. So, not all districts have that kind of school nurse program, can you tell me a little bit more about that?
Sure, yeah, it's a, we're extremely proud to partner with Norman Public Schools, and we don't subsidize the entire program, but we subsidize about half that cost. So, part of the hospital revenues, those revenues that Ken talked about, those 2.6 cents from last year goes back into our community. It is, we subsidize half that cost, our foundation the other half, so a total of about half a million dollars in the Norman Public Schools' school nursing program. That allows us also to have the telemedicine, telehealth. So the nurses are in every public school, and in three schools today, right? We have three telemedicine document, or stations. And so we have a pediatrician who is at the ready when the school nurse calls and says, I have a question about this patient, this student, and they are able to connect the parents, the nurse, the patient, and then the pediatrician, all together. The mom and dad or caregiver does not have to leave their workspace. They all come in together via telemedicine and see one another, they talk about the symptoms, and they make a recommendation. And the majority of those patients are able, after that consult, are actually able to stay in school because they are healthy enough to remain in school. Some of them have to go home, and when they do, and a prescription is required, it's called in to their preferred pharmacist, and they go by and pick that up, pick up their child, and then go back home. But we have been doing that for a number of years, quite a number of years, and we're proud to be able to make that happen.
As a parent of two children in our public schools, I thank you for that convenience.
If I could put Paula on the spot, she may know the stats, but it may, I'm sorry, but what's the biggest, what's the numbers of those students coming through the...
The visits last year were 100,000, from pre-K through high school, 100,000 visits, and most of it is things that are in urgent care in nature, so they can, the good thing about the telehealth is they can be treated and can stay in school, so that's good for them to be able to continue to learn, and parents can continue to work. So it's been a really good, wonderful program that we've worked with them since 1990 in various capacities.
Thank you.
Saw a hand over here. Councilor Carter?
I had a, Councilor Holman and I both had a fairly long conversation with a couple of your physicians, and could you expand on the value to physician retention and recruitment, and what stress the two-campus system right now puts on your staff?
Absolutely.
Caregivers?
So, you may have heard at the council meeting, one of our physicians, he's not even ours, but a physician in the community, an independent physician in the community, made the comment that we have these two great hospitals, Healthplex and Porter, and they are operating at three-quarter strength. And this plan allows them to come, those campuses and those, that power come together and operate at full strength, 100% power, because the physician is not chasing the patient, nor is the patient chasing the physician. And so they're constantly finding themselves driving between those two campuses to get to the right place to provide that care. And when they're in the middle of that care on one campus, inevitably, there's need for them back on the other campus, and so it creates a bit of a hardship. You may have, I think we may have mentioned this before, but last year we had 5,000 inter-campus transfers, and those are patients being transferred between campuses. And that is because they're, you know, they may be coming from the ER to an inpatient setting, but it is often the patient chasing the doctor and vice versa. And so, we can, by consolidating those campuses, we can keep all of those, all of our talent, those highly skilled physicians caring for the patients in one place. We eliminate the confusion in the community, we eliminate their need to go back and forth between those facilities, and all of that talent working together in one place, it's much more seamless in the way they deliver that care.
A follow-up question, Mr. Hurley was telling me about your challenges with your current ER department at the Healthplex, and that really wasn't designed for the caseload that you've got today, right? And this addresses that concern.
Correct. We will, in the plan, likely more than double the size of the ER, because that's the demand that we expect to grow. We are currently, we have 11 exam rooms on the Healthplex campus, we have 40 on the Porter campus, we have 18 in Moore. And that gives you an idea of how undersized the Healthplex is, and that was because it was a specialty hospital. And again, it was smaller in size, but this will more than double those beds. And in the end, and I believe at the end of Phase 1, we will not lose an exam room, we'll maintain those rooms for the emergency department for the system, and as Phase 2 is implemented, we actually get larger. We have more capacity for those exam rooms in the health system.
And actually, those transfer times are really going to stay the same, correct? Because the traffic issues leading between Porter campus and the Healthplex.
That's right.
I think you did some study, you did a study about that, if I...
Right. The drive, Porter and Healthplex campus are less than five miles apart, drive time 14 minutes. This location, did you, were you here when we showed the property?
I was watching it on YouTube.
Oh, okay. So from that property, that location is less than 10 miles away, but it is 14-minute drive time. And so, we, that really was an important part of our decision to find a good location.
Councilor Holman?
So at the Eastside Emergency Center, that location, I know there's probably going to have to be improvements to 24th Avenue right there, maybe even Ann Brandon Boulevard there, and probably discussions with ODOT about the intersection there, I don't know, all those types of things, or if the city will need to be involved in any type of zoning, I'm not sure, so. I know that's all preliminary here, but, and I know there's definitely going to be residents around there, as already been mentioned, they're going to have questions about what's going to happen, things like that, so.
So we anticipate we'll have a traffic impact study as a part of this process, and then look at the appropriate design for flow, and certainly conversations with ODOT if there is any opportunity to improve ingress, egress, and that sort of thing. So, you are correct.
Councilor Bierman?
Does your preliminary budget estimates include funding for that?
Yes.
I always appreciate hearing that. And also, this, just to, just to make sure that I'm stating it in multiple settings, you and I have had a couple conversations about urgent care versus emergency department care, and particularly as it relates to patient costs.
Right.
And I know you talked about the potential for some urgent care partnerships...
Yes.
In that regard. That would make me feel a lot more comfortable. So, anything, I'm sure you probably don't have anything new to add since my last award meeting on that, but even just, even just explaining to the rest of the council members what we talked about, I think they would appreciate that.
Sure, this was a topic in your award meeting, and it is about the, this east side, and can we have the freestanding emergency department and the urgent care access, and really try to direct those patients to the right level of care and the right cost as well for that care. So the answer to that is yes, and we, we're not currently providing urgent care services, but we are affiliated with the company, and so we have a partnership in place. There are others that we've been having conversations about this possibility. There is an urgent care 15-minute walk away, and we would want to talk with all of those who are interested in that area, and not come in as a 900-pound gorilla and squash them, but to have those partnerships and work with those in our community providing that care.
And I appreciate that, because that one that is only a 15-minute walk away is the only one that's open after 8:00 PM. So, it serves an important, critical need, and so I would hope that you would complement those services however you can.
Councilor Hall?
And you are talking about providing urgent care on the Porter campus, correct?
Yes, correct.
So can you expand on that a little bit?
Sure, this one, that may be a different, we may create our model, because there's not one in this space currently, so that may be the preferred operation, is that we would, we would actually run that urgent care facility on our own. Again, we may partner with someone who's interested, who would come in and make that happen. But yes, that, whether it's on that location or someplace else, we, if we had 10 scenarios of what could happen on the Porter campus, all 10 would have some form or some version of urgent care and a medical office building that we could, we could put those services in.
Okay, just want to make sure I understood that clearly. Obviously, because I represent Ward 4, the Porter campuses have been my primary focus throughout all of this, and I've appreciated your slides adapting as we go with our conversations. One thing I wanted you to have an opportunity to talk about is, on your timeline, in January 2020, you have the Porter campus revitalization planning process, so could you give a little more detail about how you see that working?
Right, we've always envisioned and have it on that timeline to make that point clear, but we've always envisioned these kinds of conversations where we would sit with the city, we would sit with the community members, we would, there are interested parties, you know, variety care, there are others who've expressed interest, and what is possible? What are your needs, and how can we integrate it into this health village concept? And so, bond issuance, start the design and construction conversations so that we can get that part started, implemented, because we can't move one patient from the Porter campus until the Healthplex is expanded. So that gives us until that 2023 timeframe before we move one patient over to the Healthplex from the Porter campus, and we want to have that ongoing dialogue about what is possible. Take these big blocks, start moving it around, does this look better here, does it look better there, does this meet your need in a better way? Do you want that roundabout, really? Do you want those streets? Does a park need to be bigger, smaller? Are apartments the best thing? Can we really put Senior Wellness Center on this campus location, that kind of thing? So, that really is, we would begin that in earnest as soon as it was appropriate for us to have those conversations.
I was going to ask you, how realistic is it that that's going to actually start in January 2020?
With bond issuance approval from City Council, that might be a little aggressive, but it wouldn't be very far after that point. Because we, again, we need to get, we already are getting interest from people in the community who want to come, learn more, and potentially be a part of that campus. In fact, there's one, I had a meeting just last week, and if we could open up some part of the campus tomorrow, they would be, they would be, it's that urgent to them, so we would want to start quickly.
Some of the topics that came up specifically in our Ward 4 meetings involved the fact that the Porter campus, as well as Griffin, are in, you mentioned designated opportunity zones, quality opportunity zones, new market tax credits. I think it would be beneficial for everybody to hear a little bit more about that, too.
So the Griffin Memorial Hospital, the 240-ish acres they have, is actually, all of it is a qualified opportunity zone, which avails an investor, a developer, to certain tax incentives and tax credits to really begin the process of renewal and investment. So, that property itself is an opportunity zone. Where we talked about our property in southeast Norman, listen to me, our property, that property in southeast Norman is also part of a qualified opportunity zone. Those areas are part of areas in communities designated that are under stress and duress, and maybe potentially in blight, and so, again, it makes an incentive for those developers to come in and be qualified for tax credits and maybe spark additional development. On the Porter campus proper, today it's eligible for new market tax credit, it's not the same, but it's very similar. I believe it's also part of an incentive zone that I don't know enough about, but there are, again, it's, the idea is that developers and investors have the opportunity to come in, use that, their capital, and spark that development, and make it, and help it to move along much more quickly. So, there are, all the, all the elements are in place to give us this opportunity to do something really remarkable, and not only on the Porter campus, but on, potentially on the Griffin campus, and then out in southeast Norman as well.
The other thing I wanted to touch on, that may have been mentioned in all the award meetings, I'm not sure, but you did specifically refer to the care sites on the Porter campus and what the future of those might be.
Sure. So, we have a packet that we hand out at all, we've handed out at the award meetings, and there's one sort of all care sites, and then there's one specific to the Porter campus, and the point of that one is for all interested to see that we have multiple practices, multiple assets, multiple care sites that are there. Of that list, you'll see two in orange, those two in orange are the only two that we anticipate moving to the Healthplex because it is general surgery and it is oncology. So you can imagine surgeons want to be near the surgery department, and all of our surgery will occur there, the inpatient surgery will occur at the Healthplex, so they would relocate. Oncology would be closer to the cancer center pavilion and the inpatient facility where their patients would be. So oncology, surgery are the only two of those shown on that site that would be relocating to the Healthplex campus in that 2023 timeframe. They're currently going over there for surgery anyway, it's just their offices are on the Porter campus proper.
One of the other concerns that came up in our Ward 4 meetings was just the actual transition, which is several years down the road, and how you would anticipate the opening of the freestanding emergency department, continuing to operate the emergency department on the Porter campus, and kind of that transition period in there, if you speak to that.
So the development of the, we anticipate the freestanding emergency department to be the first thing that opens, because it's just going to be a shorter timeframe to get designed and developed and constructed. Simultaneously, the Healthplex is happening, but again, it's that 2023 timeframe before we start moving patients over. So we would open and operate the freestanding emergency department southeast Norman, we would have operational on the Porter campus, likely until those services get transferred over and we begin potentially working on that development in areas where they might be available. So for example, I say this, for example, if on this map, if we decided that the apartments were something, that's a priority, we need to start that right away, maybe it's feasible, the way it's drawn, I don't know, but maybe it's feasible that we start construction on that in six months. And that begins, you know, construction begins there while operations are already happening in the hospital, in the Porter campus today, and then, you know, there may be other opportunities, other pieces of this get built along the way. So, we would keep those operational until the first patient day on the Healthplex campus.
Councilor Scanlon, and then Holman.
Lee actually covered one point, and this had to do with citizen involvement. There was a naysayer, I say that, a lady who was very skeptical about that happening as Porter was developed. She was also concerned that the east side is giving way to the west, and she didn't like that. But she was concerned about citizen involvement and what this turns out to be. Mr. Cubbley jumped up at the meeting and assured her otherwise, I'm not sure that she walked away really comforted. So the proof will be in the pudding, and so that's a challenge, Richie, that we really want to see that. One of the things that I've been concerned about all along, and took the trouble to go writing with your folks to learn more, but that is transport, and as I understand it, we've not talked about it here, except to say that the ambulance station will remain where it is on Porter, but there'll be another one at the Healthplex, so we'll actually have four, as I understand the proposition.
We don't have one, an ambulance base slated for the Healthplex today, just because there's not, they're out in their points.
I guess I was led to believe otherwise by Dr. Cody on our tour.
Well, it's, so when we talk about the... Well, it's, so when we talk about the design of our structure, there may be that option, but I'm saying in terms, like, you look at our projects on the information that we provided to you, it's not, we don't have that listed as a project. So we're actually, if I may, is, we view the, maybe that southeast area, further east, as an opportunity, a high priority, that we can actually create a station there.
And we talked about that, too, particularly serving points east, and wondering out loud if the current location is the best location to serve that part of town, and also talking about possible alternatives to include co-location at a fire station.
Yes.
So I'm interested in following this. Frankly, I'd like to, I guess I should go back to Dr. Cody and find out why he told me what he did.
Yeah. So he probably did, because we've mentioned all of these things. Until we get into design, does it go on that campus? Does it go somewhere else? Those are the things that we have to work through, knowing that we are going to have this ability to work more effectively.
And he did say that the proof will be, as we manage traffic patterns, we'll be better able to know, are we in the right place?
Yes.
What are the alternatives, that kind of thing?
And we reduce the number of inter-campus transfers. That keeps them out in the community. At the, I believe it was the Ward 4 meeting on Sunday, we talked about a new program. It's called ET3. E, and then there are three Ts, ET3. I don't remember that acronym, but it's emergency.
Treat.
Treat, triage, and transfer.
Triage, treat, and.
Triage, treat, and transfer. Thank you. So that, that is something that is new, and it's an innovative program. It's new to the United States, and we are, we've submitted our application, and we would be one of the first to be able to do that in the state. There will be others certainly applying for that. But it would allow our paramedics, highly trained paramedics, to go out and respond in the community. And then they would be able to triage, treat, or transfer to the right level of care. So that may mean that somebody simply needs some medication. And they may stay at home instead of the way we do it today, call 911, we pick you up, we take you to the hospital, and you spend time in the hospital. So we will have the, if we are approved for this program, we would have the ability to treat, triage, and transfer those patients.
And if I may, continuing on my conversations with Dr. Cody, he brought that up, because he was about to go to the meeting that you all talked about. And one of the things he said, describes this as a potential, is that relating to Medicare patients are pretty well-known, and sometimes come in for nothing more than, I need another prescription or whatever. And his description of this program, or a part of it was, that you can easily develop a database of frequent visitors and preempt those visits by periodically taking this mobile capability that you're talking to, and meeting them where they are, preempting a visit to the hospital, saving everybody time and trouble. And I really like that component. I think that has excellent potential.
And that is Inspire Health. It's transferring, it's transforming the way we deliver that care, and meeting the patients where they are. It truly is a part of the purpose of this program.
Councilor Holman?
So residents that live in northwest Norman right now, if they need an ambulance, where does it come from?
Let's see, they'll run from.
So there is a station off of Robinson.
By Westwood, Brian.
And there's also a station in Moore, but we also have our Moore facility. So if the ambulance is at that Moore facility, and it's a straight shot down Telephone Road, then it would come from there. So we dispatch based off of the location of where the ambulances are.
But they're not based at the Healthplex at all?
No, not today.
They're tied to fire stations, as it turns out.
Okay. And then the southeast emergency center, so we have an ambulance station that's relatively not very old. It's on 12th Avenue, southeast, Highway 9. That remains there?
It does.
Okay. But you're talking about further east, there being another one? We've had residents in Ward 5 that have been asking for that forever, so.
The station's one thing, but you can dispatch that ambulance from.
Right. And then the Porter Campus, is it possible that that urgent care evolves into an emergencies room at some point? Could it be that? I've had somebody who asked that, you know, central Norman is becoming more densely populated. We're allowing more dense apartment buildings, more people living in central Norman. Southeast Norman is growing a lot, and northwest Norman is growing. So the idea that Norman might one day have three emergency departments, would that be unbelievable? That central Norman would have an emergency center?
I wouldn't say it's unbelievable, but our focus is, again, some of that conversation about getting to the right level of care and the cost of that care, the cost of that care. And if we can do urgent care and primary care better, and be more effective, and do this ET3, and we meet those patients where they are, then we would view that need for that emergency room as a lower priority. So does it evolve over time? Certainly, it can, absolutely. In fact, that's part of our southeast Norman ED, is we will, we have enough space to expand those services, that it may one day become an inpatient facility. We don't know. But as healthcare evolves, we'll be positioned for that expansion and that growth.
I would not be surprised at all with the growth I anticipate in that part of town. It's already happening, it'll continue to happen probably, so thank you.
And I would hope that, I mean, but you've seen our analysis, and these multiple times we've shared and visited with you, we don't just wake up one day and decide we're going to do this. We are connected to what's happening in our community, and we are committed to providing the healthcare for our citizens, and to do that effectively, to do it efficiently. And so we're always and constantly looking for that innovation and those opportunities to serve better. So.
Like you said, the emergency center at the Healthplex was built to be very small, but that's just where people are going.
Right.
And there's nothing we can, that's just where people are choosing to go, for whatever reason. I don't know, you know, it's off the highway, it seems close.
Well, I'll add something in before I forget, and hopefully someone here will remember this. So several councilors have wanted some area where you could grow fruit trees that residents could just come grab. And some people have immediately just disregarded the idea, because it does take maintenance, but I know what an amazing foundation you have. And when the fairgrounds and the farmer's market move to core Norman, we're going to have even more of a desert of fresh fruit in east Norman, and that would seem like a lovely spot to put it.
Just so happens, one of our trustees is a master gardener. We'll talk to her.
Excellent, excellent. And congratulations on a successful Paint the Town Pink, all of you. It was huge, it was fantastic. So many people got involved. Erin Barnhart, you should keep her, for sure.
Oh, yeah. Well, and thank you all for your support on that. It was, that was, I mean, you did your part, and others in the community did theirs, and it was, it's still great to drive past NBC Suites by the museum. It's wonderful to see the pink.
Yeah. That's right.
Pink, pink.
Any other questions?
Councilor Hall?
I just want to thank you and your staff for rising to the occasion and rising to the challenge of reaching out to the community and attending all of our ward meetings, and adjusting to your audience, and being sensitive to their questions and concerns. So thank you for investing the time in doing that. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Well, I'm sure Mr. Split will answer any other questions that I'm sure will pop into our head the moment we conclude this meeting, because he's been very accessible so far. But with that, I'm going to conclude tonight's study session. Thank you all.